Good evening. Happy New Year. At this time, please silence your cellphones and be advised that our proceedings this evening will be recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the City of Grand Terrace City Council for January 8th, 2019. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Patrick Bauer of the Brook Church. And immediately following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Sylvia Robles. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. I suspect, from looking at me, you might think that I have another job in the month of December. And you would be right. And as addition to all the children that want to sit on Santa's knee, I have adults that come to see Santa. And I ask them, as I do the children, what do you want for Christmas? And occasionally, an adult will say, well, of course, Santa, I want world peace. And I said, well, you can do that, but you can ask that, but do you know that world peace begins with you? So with that thought in mind, let us pray. Father God, we come to you, who are the maker of heaven and earth, the author of salvation, and the one who brings peace to our lives and hearts. And we ask God that you would truly bring it to our world, bring it to this nation, to our state, to our city, and to this council meeting tonight, as you give us the wisdom to do the work you've set our hands to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, Pastor Bauer. Thank you, Councilmember Robles. I also want to note that tonight we will close in memory of Resident Bill Nessel. He was a number of things to this community. To begin with, he was a member of the Lions Club. He was a driving force behind amputee connections, helping those who had had limbs ampu-- those who had lost limbs to continue on their life. And he's a very good example of not letting his amputation slow him down. He was a community photographer, and over the last year or so, he was a photographer for the city. And in his spare time, he made and sold his own brand of mustard. And he will be missed, so we will close in his memory today. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, tonight, we have a couple of special presentations. The first one is a proclamation for National Mentoring Month. And so I will go ahead and read that. Whereas January has been designated as National Mentoring Month to focus on national attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us, individuals, businesses, government agencies, schools, faith communities, and nonprofits, can work together to increase the number of mentors to assure brighter futures for our young people. And whereas the National Mentoring Month Public Awareness Campaign, recognized by presidential and congressional proclamation, is led by Mentor, the National Mentoring Partnership, in partnership with the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health and Highland Street Foundation. In 2019, Mentor celebrates 17 years of National Mentoring Month. And whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% likely-- excuse me, 40% less likely than their peers to start using drugs, and 27% less likely to start drinking. Whereas two-thirds of adults consider it highly important for young people to have mentors, and that only a quarter of youth have mentors they need. And whereas nearly nine in 10 feel that more mentoring is needed in our country. And whereas research shows that 44% of adults who are not yet mentoring but are willing to consider it, and mentoring is posed for growth. 18- to 29-year-olds are more than twice as likely to cite having had a mentor in their childhood than those over 50. Whereas the third Monday in January is recognized nationally as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, and brings forth an ideal opportunity to highlight the importance of mentoring by honoring mentors with our community, as well as recruiting new mentors, providing training to mentoring programs, or encouraging mentor pairs to serve together. Whereas the Mentoring Research Specialist and the Mentoring Task Force is designed to bring together existing mentoring programs and resources, sharing information, and facilitating mentoring relationships between youth, being served by the Department of Behavioral Health, Children and Family Services, probation, and community-based mentoring programs. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Darcy Magna Bo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2019 as National Mentoring Month, and encourage organizations, schools, nonprofit organizations, businesses, other entities, and the citizens of San Bernardino County to engage in activities and partnerships that support mentoring with programs that promote positive outcomes, such as improved self-esteem, social skills, and knowledge of career opportunities. It was signed this day, the 8th of January 2019, by myself and all of the council members of the City of Grand Terrace. Now, I have down here that Doreen Ivory is to accept this, and you are here today. All right. I would like to present this to you, but I would like all of the council members to have a picture with you when we present this, if that would be all right? Can you make it to over here? All right. We'll meet you over there then. Thank you. of AMPAC Tri-State CDC Services. She's going to tell us a little bit about AMPAC and the services that they offer, and they are a business right here in Grand Terrace.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, Mr. Duffy, thank you so much for inviting me to talk a little bit about AMPAC and the services we provide to businesses in the community of Grand Terrace and actually throughout the state of California. We like to use the tagline, "We make access to business capital as easy as ABC." So a little bit about what we do in making business dreams come true. We're a 501(c)(3). We're a nonprofit organization. We were established in 2005 and designated as a U.S. Small Business Administration lender in 2007. We are a bit challenged right now because of the government shutdown, so we can't finalize loan approvals, but we're very much so open for business at this point and hoping for good news in the address that's going on right now. We're licensed, as I said, to serve throughout the state of California, and our mission is laser-focused on financing and fostering the success of businesses at all stages of growth, with a commitment to create positive economic development and job creation that positively impacts the region, the state, and the nation. With that, we focus on why we exist. And we exist to make communities better and families stronger as champions of jobmakers, those small businesses who are the difference-makers in our community. And we're very committed to advocating for businesses, to being experts in SBA regulations, to understanding as we work with small businesses, life happens. That differentiates us from a for-profit financial institution, a traditional bank, because we have underwriting that we say with a heart. Banks have federal regulatory requirements that they have to follow as a 501(c)(3). We can tweak our underwriting guidelines and really go the distance with the customer that banks may not be able to do. We believe in our faith giving us wisdom. When conventional practices don't prevail, our faith guides us in trying to find the right path to get to the yes for the customer. And we believe in over-serving our customers and our partners, because we do a lot in partnership with banks. So a little bit about a certified development company. We often get the question, what's a CDC? We're not the Centers for Disease Control. We are a designation of the federal government called a certified development company. And it's a designation that's in statute. There are 207 CDCs across the country. There are 20 CDCs in the state of California. And all of us have the same lending criteria, the same fees, and our pricing are all the same. They're all statutory, required by law. In the inland empire, there are two CDCs. There's another CDC in Redland, and then we're here in Grand Terrace. Our goals as partners of the Small Business Administration in serving small businesses, preserve cash, lower monthly payments for businesses, create jobs. That's a really big part of the SBA programs, serving businesses who are able to create jobs in our communities. And then, as the SBA Administrator Linda McMahon often says, we want to make business dreams come true. Small is relative, so I wanted to give you some ideas on what small means for the U.S. Small Business Administration. Under 500 employees. And sometimes people believe that small businesses is really one or two employees, or what we commonly hear a mom-and-pop shop. But under the small business guidelines of the federal government, that's under 500 employees, because the goal is to help businesses scale up and create positive impact in communities. Average net income for the business averaged over two years, $5 million. So there's a huge gamut of businesses that we're able to serve. And again, small being relative. A company that's $50 million in revenue, in top-line revenue, as long as their net income, what they keep is less than $5 million, we can still serve those businesses. Just like a company whose revenue is $100,000, we can serve those businesses as well. Business liquid net worth of $15 million, they have to be creating jobs. We're really laser-focused on creating jobs, and there's no top-line revenue cap in serving small businesses. I'm going fast, but if you have questions, I'll stop if I can. Just give me the high sign. There are two primary SBA programs. Many are called different things, two primary programs. There's the 504 and the 7A program. The 504 is a fixed asset program. That's designed to help businesses buy commercial real estate or buy equipment for their growing business. Owner-occupied, commercial real estate, where they're going to occupy 51%, they may be able to lease 49%, but that's the goal of the program. And it's a partnership. It's a public-private partnership. The bank is involved, SBA is involved through us as a CDC, and then the borrower is involved with the minimum down payment. That down payment is really important. You see a minimum down payment of 10%. That's important, because if someone goes, if a business owner goes into a traditional bank and they're seeking to buy commercial real estate, their down payment requirements can be anywhere from 25% to 50% down, depending on the industry and the project. So that's a huge difference-maker that the SBA makes to try and make sure that businesses can succeed and preserve as much cash as they can, so that they can continue to grow their business. The other partner program is the SBA 7A program, and we call it a general-purpose program. That's for business acquisition, for inventory, for equipment, also for buying buildings. But in that program, it's a bank loan, and the SBA backs it with a guarantee. So you're going to follow the bank criteria with following the SBA guidelines, but also trying to make sure that that low down payment prevails. Again, helping the business owner preserve cash. On the 504 side, that's where we specialize in. Purpose: finance or refinance buildings, equipment, do tenant improvements, or ground-up construction. 51% owner-occupied, I mentioned, a public-private partnership. The minimum down payment is 10%. But even if a business is a startup, you can still get access to this financing. There's just an additional 5% down for a startup, and we can use projections in a business plan. Startups are not going to get conventional bank financing without some help from the government. And then, anyone who gets this financing has to do a personal guarantee, anyone with 20% or more equity. The other critical part of this program is fixed-rate financing and long-term. The goal: help the business owner preserve as much cash as they can, and help them to be able to plan their cost over time. So it's a longer term, and it's a fixed rate, so that they know what their monthly payments are going to be, and they're not going to see the continued escalation by having fluctuating interest rate. So it's a 10-year, 20-year, or even 25-year term for these loans. Other programs that we do in our organization, we have a microloan program. We're a certified financial development institution by the Department of Treasury. And then, we partner with a group called The Loan Doctor to help handhold and do coaching for businesses that we work with to help them to scale. So in the microloan program, these are loans that are for businesses that are early start or getting started. They finance working capital, inventory, equipment, or marketing. Those loans are up to $50,000. And then, in our CDFI program, those are for more seasoned business. They've been in business two or more years. Also for financing working capital, inventory, or equipment, those go up to $150,000. Our goal was to, as our mission says, finance and foster the success of businesses at all stages of growth. So from the business getting started, we can help them with the microloan, to the more mature business that's seeking financing to do commercial, buy commercial real estate. The microloan terms are 10 years, the CDFI terms are seven years, and these are some of the rates. The rates range from 7% to 10 and 3/4, or in the CDFI loan, 7% to 13%, depending on the borrower, depending on their history in business, depending on credit. These are some of the clients that we've helped, and there's a number of clients, but this is a bike rental company, a beauty salon. We've helped, we're working with a daycare center that was recommended by the city manager. We're working, we worked with a company that provides car service. The gamut of businesses that we serve and industries is pretty diverse. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there questions of Ms. Kennedy at this time? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you very much for that really informative presentation that you just gave us. How long, has your company been in Grand Terrace since its inception?
No, we started out actually in San Bernardino, and we've been in Grand Terrace now. This is our fifth year.
Okay. And where are you located at here in the city?
Right there at 22365, where the Bank of America parking lot is.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, on the third floor.
Are there, are there any types of businesses that you're not, that you wouldn't be compatible with, or any types of entrepreneurial ship?
Sure. We cannot lend to anyone who's in the cannabis business, whether you're making brownies or whether you're actually selling and distributing. We can't make any loans to those kind of businesses. We also can't make loans to any sexual or perennial businesses. We can't make loans to them. Any other than that, we can loan to any businesses, any for-profit business in the area.
Thank you. So, but you're not, your services are not available for a nonprofit?
We cannot loan to nonprofits, other than childcare centers. And childcare centers that are tied to churches or other faith-based organizations, we can loan to them.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
One question, thank you. I think it's a terrific program, and obviously, it's really open to a large array. I have a friend who has a small business who sells, you know, I guess, baseball outfits and football outfits and things that cater to high schools. One of the problems he runs into is that he can't, he can't seem to take those larger orders, which really amazes me. But my understanding is, and maybe it's just the nomenclature, but he has a tough time because he can't cash flow like a $50,000 order. And for some reason, he can't get the business on the other end of it, which happens to be a school, to understand that they can't, you know, they can't fund those kinds of things. They need a deposit. Do you folks get involved in those kinds of things?
We do. We call those projection-based transactions. So what we're going to say is, you business owner, you don't have the cash flow, but you have a purchase order or some kind of letter of intent with this particular vendor. We'd like to see that, and then we'll create the projections to see how we make that work.
Then I'll let him know all about you. Thank you.
Thank you. How do businesses generally find you?
We're often referred by our banking partners, because most people who are looking for loans, where do they go first? They go to a bank. We are actually in a number of organizations throughout the region, so we also get a lot of referrals from those relationships. And then partnerships, doing things like this, making presentations and talking to people.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here tonight and presenting to us. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
All right. That will conclude our special presentations. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are to be acted upon by council at one time without any discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal from the consent calendar? All right. Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion then. I'll move adoption of the consent calendar. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any items not appearing on the regular agenda tonight. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. A request for brief response may also be requested from staff to questions raised during public comment, and a matter may be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak during this time? Thank you to those of you that are here and have turned in speaker slips. I'm going to, I'm going to tell you this right now, our timing mechanism is not functioning. And so our city, our city clerk will raise a hand when there's about 30 seconds and we'd like you to wrap up. So we'll start with Johan Gallo.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. I've been obviously absent for a little bit, but let's just call it life interrupted since summer. I'm back. So obviously, one of my main topics for the last couple of years has been the importance of increasing our sheriff budget for Grand Terrace. And I realize that San Bernardino Fire Department budget increase hit our budget for the city, which made it more difficult and delayed our efforts to get more funding to increase the sheriff coverage. But I think, and I'm hopeful, that we address it in 2019. We look at a lot of the different issues that we have within our city, and I think we need to look at whatever resources that we have. I know we have new businesses coming into Grand Terrace. I'm encouraged by that. That'll increase our tax base. But we're also seeing an increase already in the new year of crime, especially up along observation in other parts of the city, whether it's fuel theft, to break-ins, to people breaking into cars, getting their remotes, and breaking into people's houses. So that obviously concerns me, as we're seeing an increase already. And I think it's important that we look at resources to revitalize our Neighborhood Watch program and do what we can internally to really work together within the community to make sure that the sheriff that patrols our city is as safe as we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Our next speaker is Janice Maxinoff.
Janice Maxinoff, 21816, Vivienda, here in Grand Terrace. You know, I hate being up here, and I only get involved when it's something in my area. So Patrick O'Brien has bought that property under the power lines. He has put a six-foot chain-link fence around the whole property. And years ago, in one of the meetings when Warner Hodges owned the property, we were talking to him about access to the bike trail from the end of Terrace Avenue to get across that property, get to the bike trail, instead of having to go over Locadina. Well, Mr. O'Brien has fenced that off. We no longer have access to the bike trail, so now we have to go over Locadina to get to the bike trail. It's very dangerous for people that are trying to access the bike trail, people that are on horseback. Locadina has become a major road. I've been to the meeting in Colton about Patrick O'Brien's project just on the other side at Tropico and Locadina, which is really going to increase our traffic. And there is supposed to be a light there. I don't know if that's going to happen. And they're rebuilding the bridge over the Santa Ana River. All kinds of things happening in our, in our little neighborhood. I know it's his property. If he wants to put a big giant X with a fence on it, not my deal, but he- my deal, but he has blocked what Warner had given us as access to the, to the trail. I, I don't know if there's any record of it, if anything can be done, whatever. Also, on our gravel road, he has put an additional fence, which is another 20 feet from the fence that Warner put up, so it's like 26 feet in from his property line. It's just kind of getting crazy with all these six-foot fences with barbed wire on the top. So I don't know what, oh, oh, hell, what's going on there. Plus, there's been a lot of rumors, you know, because a new guy in town, what's he doing? I want to know why he has set back that, that fence line. There's been rumors that he's had meeting with council or commission people, city people, other elected officials. I'd like to put an end to that, if there is. I think there should be some transparency, is that it? Okay, that's about it. I mean, we'd like to stay as rule as possible, and, you know, with all of the rumors going around, I'd like to get them settled and, and if I could get some answers, if there is any to give.
Thank you, Ms. Maxinoff. Mr. City Attorney, anything that's going to be built on that property would go to the planning commission, correct?
Correct.
So there would be an opportunity for the public to know what is going on and have their say.
Okay, one quick thing, real fast. And, you know, I'm, I'm outside all the time, every day, from sunup to sundown. He has, he is abandoning the water wells on that property, he has pulled out the casings and is now taking the concrete out of there. Now, to abandon a water well requires a permit, and it has to be filled with gravel, then filled with slurry, concrete. I have not seen a gravel truck over there, I have not seen a, a, a concrete truck over there, and if he is abandoning the wells, and he has gone to the city for a permit, I would like to know. Because that's kind of an open area, and you know how things fall into abandoned wells.
Thank you, Ms. Maxinoff. And I know staff will follow up on, on whether he has a permit for that or not, and, and whether that action is happening. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Jeremy Briggs.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, members of council. I'm just coming up to follow up and say happy new year, say thank you, last, last meeting for the awarded grant to the league, and also just a friendly reminder that our open ceremonies is this Sunday, 8:00 a.m., at the gym in Grand Terrace, the high school, so just wanted to make sure if you guys still got a chance to come out, you know, smile, say hi to the crowd, we got a good crowd coming out, a good show coming out, a lot of the communities coming to, like, the cheer factories coming out to do a show, we have a great singer we got locally here, it's going to be a lot of fun, and I hope to see you guys come up and support.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Happy new year to you. Our next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Good evening, happy new year. Bobby Forbes, 11850 Burns Avenue, Grand Terrace. I'm very concerned about the crime this week. You're all on, all on 92313. It's pretty scary what happened the other night with four cars getting hit in one neighborhood. And I know we have low resources, but that is a planned event. Somebody, more than one person did that, and it bothers me. I know, I'm up late at night, I listen, I watch and hear things going on in town, because I'm up, sometimes I'm just driving around because I'm nervous, and sometimes I see the police officers, sometimes I don't. If the bad guy comes to town and doesn't see the police officer, he knows game's on. That really just bothers me. I'm asking that you look at the money and see if we can't get something this year, next year, the sooner the better, to help us. I know that they must have had a little bit of downtime the other day, maybe it was quiet in town in the middle of the day, and they were sitting out there writing traffic tickets, yay, that's good, for the stop signs, because nobody stops at the stop signs hardly. But my concern is the crime. It seems to be getting more aggressive, and it's all over town, not just in one neighborhood. And that's my story. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Are there any other requests to speak? All right, so I'll close public comment this time and bring it back to council for their communications. We'll begin with councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just wanted to wish everyone a happy new year. It's our first meeting back, I suppose. I didn't attend anything because I haven't had a chance to participate in any of those commission meetings yet, to report back on or board meetings, but one of the things that I did talk about prior to the election with a lot of the residents in Grand Terrace was my desire to see a youth commission be an active part of this council. We have a lot of multi-generational families in this community, and if you think about those of you who are members of multi-generational families, like myself, my children grew up in this community, now they live here, and their children are growing up in this community. And so when my children were small, what if we had taken their suggestions, or your children's suggestions, who are now adults, you know, and so it can, you know, the children should have a say-so, because if we want them to enjoy this city for the rest of their lives, give them, give them a say-so, because it'll be their kids then, that they can pass on something to. So I would like to get more active in figuring out a way to bring that to fruition, a youth commission, not, not a council, so to speak, or like, there was a plan at one time, back around 2012, I think, to involve the high school in that, and I think that's, that plan we had was, was good, but it leaves out a lot of youth that don't go to that high school, that live in our city. And so, but there are other ways that we can tap into that, and I'd like to look at that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, mayor. Just want, I hope everybody had, everybody had an enjoyable holiday and happy new year. I personally want to thank Mr. Don Turner for the Christmas card that he sent to my office, really appreciate it. And I want to thank the city staff for, and the fire department for hosting the turkey cook-off. Of course, the fire department won, so you guys have, you know, practicing cooking turkeys and stuff. It was a really good event, and it was nice seeing staff there and having a good time. One thing I've been thinking about while the long holidays, you know, of course, crime too, in this area, and I've been walking around during the holiday season, you know, there's bus traffic in Grand Terrace, it's like the, the old days, you know, because school was out and everything, so it was pretty quiet. But one thing that this year we're going to get hit was the FP5, the fire tax, and I got to thinking, it's nothing against the fire department, because you guys, you know, you just want to do your job. But the county has been hitting us hard, and I think our lease for the fire department's $1, we charge a year as a city. So my goal is to look into charging rent to the fire department, commercial price, and then in turn, use that money, well, upgrades need to be done with that building, because I think we're subsidizing with our, our taxpayer dollars, but use those funds to help enhance our sheriff's department, and only use for enhancement of our law enforcement and what they need, not for staff salaries, not for anything else, but to use the money. So, Mr. Duffy, I like, if we could look into something like that, I know you're looking at the FP5, but we need to, even without the FP5, we need to look into charging rent for the fire department, that's my personal opinion, if the other council agrees. And like I said, you know, we have a lot of people that passed away so far this year, and we had a lot of people pass away last year, and my thoughts and prayers are for their families, especially around during the holiday seasons, you know, my own father, he passed away 24 years ago, five days before Christmas, so it's kind, it's sad during the holiday season, but you know, God knows when he takes your first breath, he knows when you take your last, and you just got to keep going forward and live for the day, but I want to wish everybody, Grand Terrace, a happy new year, and bless the city. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Yeah, I just, before, I have a couple of comments on my, I just want to comment that we, as a council, already have on a future agenda item to discuss the, the fire station, and it's, would be more appropriate at that time, that item moves forward, for us to have our discussions as a group, how we want to spend that money and publicly debate it. And also, I hope that, you know, we get soon on our commu, our council procedures, so we have a more clear idea of how we're, to proceed on how we want to move on some of these things. Again, you know, I read the Palo Alto one, and it's pretty clear that during our council reporting, we don't put things on the agenda, so we need to have a process for, for ourselves that we all agree on, we really need to get to that. One of the things that is personally aggravating for me is the Orange Show rave noise, I don't know if you had a bunch of calls, but it's very, very humiliating to be in this role, where we're promised things and it doesn't happen. It's just extremely aggravating, so we might, we have to set an ad hoc committee or something to, to do a, a new look at that. And so I just attended the auditor controller swearing-in, Ensign Mason. It was fascinating, because when he was talking about June election, I'm thinking, why is he talking about the June election? Well, I had to remember, he, the new auditor controller got elected in June, and he had to wait seven months before he could take office. And he's, he's, I followed his campaign, he's a really compelling gentleman, and he's going to be great for our county, because he's already going to be reminding the, the county board supervisors about the pending pension crisis. And I'll just close with saying that when they were interviewing people to take over Mr. Romulus's spot, Kerry Davis, who's a CPA, said, "You have a $400 million unfunded pension liability," and they just kind of like moved on, and in the questions that they asked people applying, nobody, they didn't ask anybody about the pension crisis. So I just found that, that interesting, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson.
Just a couple of things, mayor, thank you. I, I thought I heard Citizen Janice talk really quick about razor wire on this fence that, that had been discussed. If there is any razor wire being installed on any fence in the city, my understanding is, is that's illegal. And so I'd just like to kind of point it out, or, you know, because I, I heard it really fast. Razor wire or barbed wire, not legal, hasn't been illegal in the state for a long time. So if that's the case, then, you know, we've got a safety problem. The well abandonment situation, last time I abandoned a well, last thing I remember is the county health department sets the requirements, and I'm not even sure the city even gets involved in, in a permit, but if we do, I would imagine it's probably just to stand aside, but she is right, if there's being, if there are wells being abandoned, there are procedures that you have to follow, and usually, they have to be slurried. Abandoned about 100 of these things, and oil wells in a community. So, last but not least, and I know these are small items, but my wife made a special request. She said, "Why don't you mention that it'd be great to get an even bigger Christmas tree for next year?" So I'd like to put it on the tick list. That's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Just wanted to take us back to December 12th. I missed the city birthday party, unfortunately. I know that the, the historical and cultural committee works very hard on that, and I congratulate the Boy Scouts Troop 40 on their being chosen for their recognition that year. I did attend the California JPia December meeting, and they, they moved it because of the holidays. The takeaway again is that we are in good hands. The risk services group that, that is contracted had their annual audit, and they received a 94% score on that audit. These are the, these are the annual claims handling performances. The Carl Warren Company does the third-party administration for the JPia. They had an overall audit score of 97%, which is good, is, is very high, although it was down a point from last year. They generally look at scores ranging from 90% or above as being highly desirable and difficult to attain. One other thing to note is that the SBX line, which is the express bus that goes through San Bernardino County, they are launching a Saturday service starting on January 12th. And as part of this launch, free rides will be offered on the first three Saturdays in January, so the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th. This is a low-cost, or excuse me, it's a cost-neutral service, they say, as charges to the underlying local service on Route 2 will offset the cost of this service. Related to the SBX Saturday service promotional campaign, OmniTrans has partnered with the California State University San Bernardino, their athletic department there, to provide customers with the, and the public with free admission ticket to the women's and men's basketball games on January 26th. So you can get free basketball tickets, and you can take the bus. And that is one of the key destinations for the SBX bus. You can find more information at omnitrans.org. With that, I will move on. We have no public hearings, we have no unfinished business, so we will move on to new business. This is item seven on our agenda. City of Grand Terrace legislative ideas for Assemblymember Reyes and Senators Connie Leva to advocate on behalf of the City of Grand Terrace. Mr. City Manager Harold Duffy.
Thank you, mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. So tonight's report is trying to address an issue that's happened over the last year and a half. Each December, Assemblyperson Reyes has provided an invitation to individual members of the council to ask about how she can best help the city in terms of promoting legislation. So over the last couple of years, I've compiled the list of, of things that the council's talked about, and we've provided that information to her. And I believe last year, in last February, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson actually met with Assemblyperson Reyes and provided her the list. But that list still is not the official list by this body. It's a, it's a collection of, of conversations the bodies has, has had and approved in the past individually. So this report is trying to provide an avenue for the council to adopt a, a priority or platform that then staff can turn around and work with the Assemblyman's office to help promote the council's policies. So as I said, our goal is to provide our legislative advocates in the state assembly and state senate, city program priorities, thereby allowing the state-elected officials representing the citizens of Grand Terrace to align their legislative priorities with local elected officials. So based on the list that we put together, and once again, the list that's in the staff report is a starting point, and it would, the, the thought process is that if there is anything else that wanted to be added, at that point in time, the council could, can make that decision today. So this is a port for Mount Vernon Slope stabilization. The City of Grand Terrace submitted a notice of interest for a hazard mitigation grant from the California Emergency Management Agency. The city's local hazard mitigation plan was approved by the state of OES. In the, in the long, in the local hazard mitigation plan, the city identified that Mount Vernon Slope as a significant hazard for the community. The slope is not stable, and the city fears that imminent failure will result in loss of life. It is estimated that the stabilization of the Mount Vernon Slope will cost approximately $3.7 million. The city originally planned to pay for the project with redevelopment bond proceeds, however, when RDA ended in 2012, the funds were frozen, therefore, the city is unable to address the significant hazard within the community. The city was able to set aside about $600,000 in RDA bond proceeds to match a potential grant from OES. The city did receive notice from OES that we do qualify- OES that we do qualify for grant proceeds, and that we've, we've been urged to submit a grant that's due in April. So we're looking forward to submitting that. And introduce legislation to reinstate video parking violations, digital photography. This is, in September 2010, AB 2567 was passed to allow local public agencies to install and operate automated parking enforcement system. The city actually implemented this program in 2015, 2016, and we started about the program sunset in 2016. One of the requirements of the law was that there was supposed to be a hearing where the assembly and the senate could look at the findings of how the, how the digital photography ticket program actually worked out. Unfortunately, that hearing never occurred, so our, one of our goals is to have Assemblyperson Reyes or Senator Leva try to reintroduce the, reintroduce the legislation to allow that program to work. I do, I can say too that I shared this program on my LinkedIn account, and I received probably 50 requests from different cities asking about how that works, and, and we talked about the efficiency of the program. So I believe that this is reintroduced, we will get lots of support from others, other jurisdictions also. Also, the next item is support legislation to provide priority funding for Proposition 51 funds. That's the Public School Bond Act of 2016, to schools that are on environmentally compromised or sensitive sites that are adjacent to freeways in major intersections. As you can see as a result of this picture, this is our Grand Terrace Elementary School. It butts Barton Road and also aligns along with the I-215 freeway. The city, the, I'm sorry, the school district would like to relocate the school to a site near their high school. In addition, the, the site currently sits on what we believe is very valuable commercial property. Give you an example, the Lewis Group was very interested in this, and at one of the trade shows, they put together a mock brochure identifying this particular site. By the end of the show, they had a couple of big boxes, and all these signed up to, to locate at this site. So it's a, it's a real prime area. The problem that we have is that the site, to move for new schools, about $34 million, the schools indicated, the school districts indicated that. The site has a probably value of about $12 million. And so you've got this gap in between that you'd have to find the funding for. But there is, as I said, Proposition 51 for shovel-ready projects, and there's millions of dollars that are, that are available to, to help school districts relocate schools. The next item will support the city and this Colton Joint Unified School District with Proposition 68 grants for refurbishment of the pool at Terrace Hills Middle School. As the council may recall, we entered into a partnership with a Colton Joint Unified School District to refurbish the pool. The school district had an initial estimate to repair the pool of about $125,000. That work was completed. The pool was refurbished and looked fabulous, except it kept losing water. And further engineering studies determined that the pool was leaking, and they have an estimate of about $2.2 million to actually bring it to, to redo it, to have it, have it stable and operational. So Prop 68 is a $4 billion grant program that the state is implementing for parks and environmental issues such as storm drain and other activities. So the state's actually working on legislation now. They'll be moving that, moving that forward. So we're hoping that we would be, get some support on doing Prop 68 grant funds.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
I see a request, Prop 68 funds for allocation for inclusive playground equipment. Did you skip that one?
I'm sorry, that's, that's, that's the...
Okay.
It should be coming up next, then.
That was, I thought it was right before the swimming pool.
Okay.
Like right there. No, right, one, one more. Right there. No. It was after the moving of the school.
Okay.
There you go. That's what happens when you give me the slides in front of me.
Actually, that, that's, that's in the wrong place. It should be coming later on down the line. But one, and this is an addition for inclusive, the title's there, but the information is actually germane to what I was just talking about. So there was an additional request by a council member after they saw the agenda item to look at trying to, trying to access grant funds for inclusive playground equipment. So Prop 68 has about half a million, half a million, I'm sorry, half a billion dollars for renovation of playgrounds throughout the state. Part of that process is for disadvantaged communities. So one of the, one of the items that I'm hoping to promote is to be able, is to be able to have the designation of inclusive playground equipment included as, as, as part of disadvantaged communities because inclusive playground equipment should be allowed anywhere, not just only in, not just only in disadvantaged communities. So the overall goal there is to promote, to have the senator or the assembly promote legislation to include inclusive playground equipment for, and have it qualify for grant funding under Prop 68. Assist the city and Colton Joint Unified School District with development of a mesh network for city parks and city security cameras. So currently, the city has about 10 camera, cameras throughout the city that monitors our city streets. In addition to that, we have cameras at two of our parks. Those cameras all operate on a paid prescription internet system, and those systems sometimes fail. We could qualify to build a mesh network that would be totally included in, in, self-contained, to be able to also open that network up to the school districts. So after school, kids can go to parks, and they can get on the internet, and they can have that access. One of the things that Colton Joint Unified School District has indicated that there, they have quite a few students that do not have access to the internet. And so they think that's a hindrance. And so by having a mesh network built, we could create certain hot zones throughout the city, and that kids can go to different parks, and they can actually access, access the internet. The next is support funding for smart bus shelters. So part of, so part of this particular program would request that the assembly and the senate promote legislation to provide funds for bus shelters that's, that primarily service school, school districts, and, for high school and for college students, and also for bus shelters that are near senior centers. As the elderly and the youth are susceptible to inclement weather and hot weather, and these shelters for the smart, the shelters, smart bus shelters offer shelter for, for those, those weather issue, related issues. We also have the Urban Greening Grant. The City of Grand Terrace has urged assembly members and senators representing the City of Grand Terrace to work with California Resource Agency and introduce legislators to support grants for California rail, trails. We've applied for Urban Greening Grant twice, and we have not been successful in, in that. Although we, our primary purpose for our urban green grants has been to provide access to the Santa Ana River Trail and utilize the natural buffer that we have from the abandoned railroad rails. So our goal would be to have the senator or the assembly person propose legislation that would provide some additional points or incentives for grants that are submitted to take abandoned rail lines and turn them into access to places like the Santa Ana River Trail. And this was actually another one of those items that a, a member of the city council came in and said they would like to see this added to, added to the list. Okay. And this is an additional one, too. Support legislation to provide grants to designated green belt areas within the city, within, within a city for urban farming and organic food supply. Under this scenario, over the past year, the governor signed Assembly Bill 551 to promote urban farming by establishing urban agricultural incentive zones. So with that, those are much like the Williamson Act, where you could take land, and if you have a contract with a urban farmer, you would get a reduction in the, in the property, in your property taxes. What we're requesting, and the concept is, we would be requesting that the senator or the assembly person promote legislation that if a city has a designated, has a designated green belt area, that they would then be able to apply for grants and get grant funding for infrastructure to promote urban farming in those, in those green belt areas. And we're talking about farming that is where the, much like in our urban green belt area, it's predominantly based upon the landowner doing, having a business that is, is urban farming or farming-related business, and then they have a second, they have ability to have a dwelling on site. But the primary purpose is for that farming. And this was the actual one, request for Prop 68 funds to allocate for inclusive playground equipment. And with that, I'm available for, for any questions.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Mr. City Manager, I, I know that there is a coalition that is afloat in relation to interior road funding and so on, but I'd like to know if we know what percentage the state is funding to us of, of the amount of money that we forecasted over our five-year plan so far as road maintenance within the city. At this juncture, it seems to me it would be less than 1%. So what, what, what kind of money, and not counting pulling from A to B to C to D, but specifically state funding that is to our benefit so far as road maintenance, because we've got a huge, you know, chunk that we've identified over our five-year plan, and that five-year plan could be a 15-year plan, and by that time, the roads will be little crumbly messes, so.
Yes. So initially, when we did our five-year program, we had enough money to do CIP year one, year two, and now we're on year three. And so with the, with the passage of SB 1, we anticipate getting an additional $200,000 per year. And that's not going to cover, obviously, the, the remaining of the five-year CIP, which, and the CIP is adjusted every year, so we just add more programs. So it's always a five-year CIP. So in year, in year three, what our goal would be is to take advantage of programs which the state offers, so you, that you can leverage that $200,000. So, for example, the state has a, what they call a trip program, where you can go to the state and say, "I've got this SB 1 money. I want to commit it for five years. Give me the five years in advance, and I can do my, my road work." That's just one of the, one of the different scenarios that we use. But we're actually coming back to the council with a, with a, a mechanism to fund our third CIP, our third-year CIP program.
It would seem to me that it would not much, be much of a stretch, considering the fact that the, either the state, or the county, or the city, I guess if you wanted to count Sunny Mead, Moreno Valley, they've never put in that secondary highway access that goes up over the old dump, but yet there's been hundreds of units that have been built in that area. It would seem to me it wouldn't be much of a stretch for us to prove the idea that Barton Road in itself is a secondary highway. And it would seem that it would be possible for us to apply for funding that is specific to Barton Road. Like, you know, if we go out to fund police protection, it's specific to the funding on police protection, rather than just, "Well, we've got a whole bunch of interior roads, and they're all, you know, all going to go, go to trash eventually. You know, we need some money." In this particular instance, I think we can easily point to the fact that there's a ton of traffic, especially truck traffic, I hear it all the time, that goes on, you know, goes on Barton Road, and it's going to increase substantially, because we have a road that's going to make it even more possible. And most of that is pass-through traffic, and I think we could make that point and see if we can approach the funding from there. I know when I met with the assemblywoman, the biggest thing that I tried to point to was funding for interior roads, but if we can get Barton taken care of and stabilized so that it doesn't suffer so much damage, then at least we can take the rest of the money that we can find in bits and pieces and apply it to the rest of the stuff.
And, and Council, and Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, I think I may need a little help from our Public Works Director, but I believe Barton Road is considered an arterial road. And so right now, we have about $3.7 million committed to Commerce Way expansion. But I think we can, we can add Barton Road as part of that arterial network, and then we can, we can then move forward to try to get funding to do what you're...
Yeah, and I think arterial is really kind of a traffic designation. So if we don't step in our own stuff, we can make sure that that arterial also means, as far as the state is concerned in funding priorities, a secondary highway.
Okay.
Because we have to show that they're bypassing the flow relief out there for obvious reasons, and then we're drawing a lot of traffic from other areas. And you know, I have no love for our, our traffic guy, but that's something he should be able to provide the information. He should already, already have that information.
And so, sir, so is your recommendation that, that we come up with a legislative platform to try to get Barton Road designated as a secondary highway so we can get additional funding to support?
It's already being used that way, and I don't think it's ever going to change.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But obviously, we're going to need the, the warrant backup to be able to do this.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, before we go into discussion on items that we would like to include, are there any questions of staff before I open for public comment? All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Johan Gallo.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members. Johan Gallo, 22808 De Soto Street, Grand Terrace. I want to go back to 2018 as it relates to Item 7, and I remember specifically Assemblymember Reyes making a commitment to Grand Terrace when she attended the public meeting that was held and funded by the Sheriff's Department, that she was going to be here to help us in any way possible. Where is it? I'm waiting. The rest of us are waiting. I have to go back to Bobby's statement, Ms. Forbes. It's very alarming to me to see the break-in that happened the other night. When you see a sedan driving with a van following, that's a team. They broke into the car, they took the remote, they got into the house. Lord knows what could happen next. So I think we really have to look at both Assemblymember Reyes and Senator Leva and figure out, what are you going to do for us? We're dealing with a budgetary issue. You've got a governor that's leaving office that's boasting that we have a $30 billion surplus. Where's our money? I think we have to really get serious about what we're doing as it relates to the support for revitalizing programs. If the senator and assembly member can help us revitalize the Neighborhood Watch program, paying for signs, hardware, any other resources that are there to help the community, what they can do to help fund the city, to, to Councilmember Wilson's point, this is no longer a city street. Grand Terrace is a highway. You don't go from the minor traffic that we saw when we moved here in 1984 to almost 20-plus thousand cars a day. Now, through the interchange and the update of Barton Road, we're going to see 45,000 cars a day. I'm sorry, that's a highway. We look at the constant issues that we face, and I think we have to look at both Assemblymember Reyes and Senator Leva, and have them roll up their sleeves and figure out what are they going to do to help Grand Terrace, because obviously, we don't have the budget. There's nothing magical or mystical. There's nothing magical or mystical happening as far as retail coming in that's going to get us the kind of money that we're going to need to provide the type of funding that we need to increase the sheriff coverage for not only traffic safety, but the community safety at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other requests to speak on this item? All right, so I'll close public comment, and I'll come back to the council to discuss the items that have been put before us, the additional items that have been added, and anything else that they would like to see on these legislative priorities. Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I liked the handicap equipment that was added on. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mr. Gallo was right, they talked about the sheriffs and how we could help, and she said we could have anything to help. One thing, you know, I talked to Daniel about the additional sheriffs that the state can help us with anything, and we brought up the HOPE program, and what a good positive impact it has, and also provides us with additional coverage for the sheriff, so we got two birds with one stone. But even last night, when Governor, Governor Gavin Newsom was getting sworn in, he was talking about he wants to be more proactive about homelessness. So I think if they want to do that about the homeless at the state level, we could have a HOPE program, because we've got something going here that would help curtail the homeless plus help with crime. And I'd really like to see that pushed, and, and because they're always asking, well, give me a reason why you need additional sheriffs besides the crime, well, here we are, we're helping people in the state have problems. So I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Duffy, I, following along the lines of what Councilmember Hussey was saying, I noticed that one of Governor-elect Newsom's platforms, major platforms, is Youth and Family Services. He wants to increase education, early childhood education, he's a big proponent of that, and family services. And there's a, quite a few people and young families in our community that have expressed a desire to try to see daycare brought back, and the loss of our daycare center was a real blow to them, and perhaps if Mr. Newsom, if Governor Newsom is so, you know, strong about providing for those, those services, we could reach out to them and say, you know, we could use some help with this.
And so, Councilmember Allen, one of the things to, to talk about daycare is, what's important is that, let's take it in twofold. The daycare building has now been sold. The op, the owner of the building wants to do daycare, and so he's actively looking, working with the county, and he is probably open to anyone who can, you know, can, can make that business work. Separate from that, I would caution the city, we really drilled in and looked at the numbers, it, it just didn't work for the city. And, and so for the city to operate daycare, it would not be fiscally sound, but for the city to work with the legislature or the governor to promote daycare at the existing facility, which is now getting all the ADA upgrades and everything else, that's, that's a, that's a sound strategy.
And it would promote Goals Four and Five partnerships and that sort of thing. That's what I was talking about. Not, not that we get into the daycare business, but that we somehow help our, the families in our community, help them out by.
Absolutely.
Working with partnerships to figure out a way if this is doable.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
One other item, separate from the road thing. It would seem to me that this community could benefit from a city cultural center. We are very, we are a very small city, and we've done really well with our city hall, but there is no place for people to go. And it's been a long time on my list, and I know it's been a long time on the mayor's list as well. We could use some help with that. I guess, now, does Cal, California Water Resources, they have a big water line that runs right through the middle of our city. Do they pay franchise fees?
They do not.
No. How do they get away with that? Well, anyway, you know, you know, in lieu of rent, it would sure be nice if they'd figure out a way for us to fund a, a cultural center for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
One of the things, when I looked at this agenda item, there was two references to Assembly Member Reyes, specifically, not Senator Leva, asking to meet with us individually, and I was wondering, did I delegate that? Would happen, so, or was there not time? So I have a few suggestions, but I think what's really lacking here is that we really should have had a, a more casual meeting that we have this, you know, discussions, because we're not able to really brainstorm or talk about different things. So for next year, again, this is again having procedures and looking at the Palo Alto model, is they have a, a method of meeting, so you can have these kinds of dialogues and have our legislative platform be really an organic, strong discussion amongst us. And too, that we have to remember that when we have a priority, that's what, we speak in one voice on, on our priority. So I was going to say, you know, I was the one that was interested in green space for organic farms. There's a, in Mission Viejo, there's a multi-generational community that has an organic farm as part of, of that development. It's very expensive, the houses for, for someone my age start at $697,000. And then Jeff McConnell sent me a video, for some reason, I had for a month in my inbox and didn't notice, where in Arizona, Detention Basin is being used as part of the organic farming, and they feel they can feed that entire subdivision for all its produce needs. And again, that'd be organic, also trucks aren't going to be shipping it in, it's a lot of mitigation of fossil fuel use. I've always, of course, you know, been beating the drum for 32 years about the Santa Ana Regional Trails Link. One of the things that I was hoping to get some discussion on is, is you need somebody with a lot of authority to convene, say, City of Colton and Grand Terrace folks, to maybe, if the, if the council members are also interested, in a discussion of some kind of Santa Ana regi, regional park. And that, again, you know, reduces fossil fuel and provides Grand Terrace with some larger venues of recreation that, you know, are, are limited within, within our city. The other thing is, the existing community center, it's an eyesore, you know, there needs to be some discussion of possibly, you know, getting that demoed. I don't know how in your bigger scheme of, you know, the school district funding, how, how that would go. The community center, you know, I just would, would think that they would tell us that's something that we were supposed to do locally, because then otherwise, everybody's going to want the government to pay for that. But it's something that we need to, to discuss, and that's all I have to offer.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. With respect to, to the process that we're going through right now, I think that this is something that's been missing from the council for quite some time, and, and it definitely needs to happen prior to the end of the year, because that's generally when our Senator and our Assembly member then come to us and say, well, we're going into budget, what is it that, that is important? But I'd also like to know that throughout the year, are there other times that it, it makes it an opportunity for us to then revisit with them what the priorities are?
Yes, Mayor, and, and one of the overall goals is, by establishing this priority list, we can then provide you with quarterly updates. So we've made contact with the Assembly, we've done this and this and that, and then so we, we can naturally move into September, October, and say, okay, this is the progress that we've made so far this year, are there still the same priorities? Let's pull this together, and then let's either take our list and send it to, to the Assembly and the Senator before they ask us, and invite them to come to us and, and say, here's where we are. I, I did want to say that the majority of the items that are listed here, and even the new ones that I added, I was always trying to find a, an existing funding source that we could say, you know, if we say that we want you to do this, and there's no funding source, but there's a funding source, we'd like you to advocate for this. It is, my experience has been that, that when an Assembly member or Senator can identify the state agency that has the funding for the program, a, a call and a request, or even an administrative action based on what we're looking for can be quite helpful. And so certainly, we'll take all the concepts that we have that you guys have, have mentioned, and I'll try to continue to find a funding source, but, but definitely, this will give me some clear direction to be able to continuously engage throughout the year with the Assembly and the Senators saying, can we, can we meet to go over the council's priority list?
A little bit out of our jurisdiction, but to the idea of National Orange Show, since it is sort of a quasi-state annual citrus fair, perhaps there is funding at the state level for another venue that would enclose the current entertainment that they have that affects our residents. They used to have a nice, a nice venue for musical entertainment that I understand was the victim of an airplane crash, and it was never rebuilt, and so it's not really necessarily our place to ask for that, but, but maybe we need to encourage the, the new mayor in San Bernardino to, to seek out that in partnership with the National Orange Show Board of Directors.
Okay.
All right, so at this time, do, do we want to give direction on these Assembly ideas? Do we want the list to come back for a, a formal vote? What would we, what would you like to do at this time?
Is, is this list, is this the, the final ideas right here? Or is that what we're trying to decide?
That's what we're trying to decide. I know staff gave us some, there were additional added from Councilmember ideas than, than those that were added tonight. Is it, is it desire us to go ahead and approve what we've discussed? Would you like to see the whole list come back?
Is there any kind of a, Mayor, is there any kind of a urgency to this, to get to the Senator or to the Assembly?
There isn't an, an urgency, not that I'm, not that I'm aware of. If, I think that we, if we bring the list back, based on your comments with some, with some language, and we could bring it back, and you could put it on the consent calendar, or you could, you could pull it off the consent calendar if you wanted to add something else to it.
Is that acceptable? Mayor Pro Tem?
Would it be possible for you to go ahead and give us the tip on each one of them like you have on these, where you've identified that funding source, where, you know, basically it's going to be, you know, the receptacle is going to be there so that we know that we've got a pretty good chance at, at making that play?
I'm sorry, I didn't get to the first part of that, sir.
Well, you talked about the urgency, you know, if, if you have a fund that's already determined.
Right.
And you go to tap that, that's a lot easier to try to get some action on than it is to go out there in the middle of nowhere and try to do stuff. So could we also get that on this? Because it would seem to me that that would be our first priority.
Okay.
I mean, granted, we want certain things, but it makes more sense to go after the things we can get.
Absolutely.
First and foremost.
Absolutely. So you, you would, you would like me to come back?
Yeah, just let us know, you know, like, for example, the road thing I brought up.
Sure.
You know, I know there are a whole bunch of programs that are in the works.
Sure.
But, you know, a lot of it has to do with regional things.
Sure.
Whereas the, you know, there's been a coalition that has been formed, with the various 350 communities within the state of California to try to create a, inner-street funding circumstance. I don't want to tap that, I want to tap the state.
Right.
So however, we're going to get there.
Okay.
Councilmember Robles.
I have no problem with the, the strategy of bringing this back for the consent agenda. I just want to offer maybe a suggestion that a good time to relook at things may be after the May revise, and that's a time where the council's not so overwhelmed with, like, a November election or holidays and all that kind of thing.
Oh, you're saying instead of at the end of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that we have that in our tickler file to, to do, to do each year.
Okay. So for this year, would you like this to wait until May to come back, or would you?
No.
Would you be okay with this one, this time coming back to us?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Hussey.
I was told that the legislation, legislator extended this for till February 22nd, but I want to make sure we don't miss the boat on this, because I don't want to hear when we see Assembly Member Reyes, "Oh, well, why didn't you give it to me? I did that last week." You know, so we've got to make sure we don't have a, a deadline, and we need to make sure that we can move forward on it with our requests, so that's my only concern.
So, so there's a couple things that we, that we can do. We can certainly bring it back to, to the next council meeting. The other thing that we can do is what you've done in the past, where you, when you have legislation for the League of California Cities. What we do is, we write the letter, we give you a copy of the letter, and if you guys have any issues with it, we bring it to the council, if not, it moves forward. I could take the comments that you've had here tonight, write the, the different strategies for each one of the items that, that you've mentioned. If you are okay with it, then we can, we can move it forward, or if not, we can just have it agendized for our next coun, our next council meeting.
Mayor Pro Tem, you're shaking your head.
I think you know where our priorities are in the most part, and so that's why I was saying, you know, if we can identify the ones that we can easily tap.
Absolutely.
Then if you already got the path there, then I got no prob, I'm, I'm not worried about, you know, how the baby gets born. I just want to make sure it gets delivered.
Okay.
Councilmember Robles.
I was just thinking, Mayor Pro Tem, just like he did with the, with our budget, and you had different colored tabs, which part would be our money, which part would be, hopefully, grant money? That would be nice, and then that we have a handy.
Okay.
Handy guide.
So what I will do is, I will, I will bring this, bring this back in a form that has the discussion, but also the funding components associated, it will be, I'll, I'll lay it out that way.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Allen, you had one last thing?
You know, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson mentioned, you mentioned how Barton Road is, is like an alternate highway, and I think I would be stating the obvious if I didn't say that Mount Vernon is the same way. I mean, it's used, it's a regular bypass for big trucks, small, all of them to, you know, public transportation buses, everybody uses the hill to avoid the freeway. So if you can do it from Barton Road, maybe you can do it from Mount Vernon, too, whatever it is, you can do.
Maybe we could make it part of a transportation corridor. There's funding for that, right? All right, thank you very much. We will move on to Item Eight, which is Information and Progress Report on Grants, awarded and in application.
Yes, Mayor, and for this report, actually, Mr. French, also Ms. Malina and myself will, will be presenting the information. So I'll just start off by letting the council know that this is our, our attempt to try and let the council know about the various types of grant programs that we have been working on, and that we recently received additional funding for, and where we are in terms of the, the progress on some of the grants that you've heard about in the past. So this is an update for us, and Mr. French will start off first.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers, Allen, French, Public Works. These items aren't in any particular order, the grants that were, that are active at this time. The first one. The first one is the Mount Vernon Safety Grant. It's part of Cycle Eight of the HISP program. The grant was awarded to us in June 2018 and it covers intersection improvements for five intersections along Mount Vernon from Grand Terrace Canal to the north and all the way south to Pico. The package includes, or the work will include signage, striping, some lighting, and it will hopefully improve the safety at the intersections along the Mount Vernon corridor. The plans are wrapping up at this time and we're waiting for the state to give us approval to bid the project, so we hope to be under construction relatively soon.
So in the larger context of Mount Vernon, so as a part of our overall traffic mitigation program, all of the intersections on Mount Vernon will someday have a signal. This is the grant program to increase the safety until we get to that point.
Next one is going to be the Barton, West Barton Bridge Replacement Project that we are working with the City of Colton. They're actually the lead on that project and they've secured funding for 80% of the project. We're sharing our fund with Colton's to come up with 10% each, or I'm sorry, 11.47% each to pay for that program. That's part of the Highway Bridge Replacement Program. The grant award was for 3.5 million and awarded in 2017. They are presently waiting for the state to approve final engineering contract. They went to RFP last year and only one engineering firm responded, so they're waiting for approval. Once that comes through, then they'll be able to do the final design on that project. That will remove the bridge that's there now or the old railroad tracks and just place it over the top of Phil as a conventional roadway. The next program, the CalRecycle Grant that we received for our capital improvement program, we used that, those funds for our year two that we completed earlier last year and that paid for the rubberized asphalt that we used on, there was about 10 streets that we resurfaced, not just slurry sealed, but we resurfaced as you can see there. So that grant paid for those improvements. We are getting ready to submit the final paperwork on that and hope to get the reimbursement, definitely before the end of the fiscal year. The next project is the guard rail grant that we just recently were awarded this last month. It's the Cycle Nine of the HISP program. We have applied for guard upgrades and replacements for Mount Vernon, Barton, Vivienda on the north end of town, northwest end, and on Vista Grande as it runs along the bluff. So we're hoping to be able to replace that guard rail if needed and add some, there are some sections that we need to get replaced. That grant is a fully funded grant, no match is required on that grant, so that's helping us out. We will coordinate with Colton as we go towards the city boundary to get the road project, to get that project done. The next one is the Mount Vernon Slope Project, which the city manager covered a little earlier. And that one, we just applied for a notice of intent and we were told that it was unacceptable to submit for application and we'll do that by April.
Yeah, I do want to add to that is that it's because the Council approved that hazard mitigation plan that allowed us to qualify to be able to submit for that. Without that plan being approved, we would not have been able to apply for that particular grant.
Yes, that would have probably been rejected at that point. And the next one is, this is a CalRecycle Grant. We were, we applied for educational recycling program, for school programs to just introduce the kids into the recycling program. The next programs will be covered by Director Molina.
Thank you, Director French.
Were there any questions of Mr. French?
Councilmember Hesse?
On the Barton Bridge Replacement Project, you got, has HBP Highway Barton Bridge, would that be road or are you still considering highway? On the slide, the first slide?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The slide that you have on the Barton Bridge Replacement Project?
Yes.
You have it as a highway. Does it have a road?
Yeah, that's just the verb that they're using for that.
It qualified through a program that was for highways?
It was for bridge replacement. The road classification
Doesn't matter?
Wasn't the determining factor. That's correct. Because it is just a two-lane road at this point, but it is classified in our general plan as a major, a major highway.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director French. Hello, Director Molina?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. So I'll go through a few projects we have. As the City Council is aware, we did get awarded from the ATP Cycle Two Grant $295,000 to prepare the city's active transportation plan. The City Council did adopt that plan in November and so we've forwarded the final plan up to the California Transportation Commission for them to look at and approve. And so really what we're doing now is just doing the paperwork to close out the grant. So we anticipate we'll close that out by the end of March of this year. And I should add, this plan identified a number of projects that were solicited by input by the community through community meetings with the school districts, school audits, bike audits, walk audits, and so they did identify a number of projects that are in that plan that we can then use to apply for subsequent grants. So the Blue Mountain Trail and Trailhead, the city was awarded a grant through the Habitat Conservation Fund. We received a $212,000 grant, but we anticipate our budget to be over $500,000 and so the city's contribution would be the difference between that project budget and the grant amount. And so what we would do with this particular project is create a parking trailhead and a trail to connect to the Blue Mountain Road so that the hikers in our community can have a place to park and legally access Blue Mountain. We just received proposals for the design and construction management and construction inspection for this project and our goal is to bring it back to the City Council at the second meeting of January to award a contract. We've scheduled out construction to start in July of this year and to be completed in January 2020. Our ultimate goal is to have the trail ready to go for the Blue Mountain Walk of 2020. The city also received a $50,000 award through the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee. That's the MSRC grant and that's to construct DC fast chargers, so for electric vehicles. We, in our grant, identified two locations, City Hall and a commercial site. We did send out an RFP, we have received responses to that RFP, but right now we're also doing an assessment of what would be the best way to implement this project. Does the city want to own these chargers or do we want to partner with the manufacturer, have them own it? They maintain it, they operate it. When upgrades, you know, technology changes, when these need to be upgraded, the manufacturer would want to update that. So we're taking a look at that, to make sure that we're taking the best option possible. But in partnership with that, we're also leveraging funds and we've applied for a Southern California Incentive Project Grant. It's called the SKEP. And actually, we were awarded the SKEP for the City Hall location. We received $140,000 for that and we would be reimbursed up to 70% of either the $140,000 or the budget amount, whichever is less. And so we would anticipate this being completed by the end of May of this year. We also applied through the SKEP for a commercial location at the Barton Plaza. That's where the Walgreens and Chills, that center. And so if we're awarded that, that site, actually north of Barton Road, is in a disadvantaged community, so our reimbursement would be a little bit more, be up to 80%. And so with the SKEP, once you're awarded, you have 12 months to construct that and so that would be our schedule for that. Now, we also applied for the Cycle Four Active Transportation Program SB One Grant Program. If the Council recalls when we were having the discussion in November, in October, November, on the ATP, we identified two priority projects, West Barton Road and Mount Vernon. This would do a number of protected bike lanes, green lanes, curb outs and pedestrian improvements. And so this grant amount was for 2.4 million. Unfortunately, we weren't as successful in our process and so we were not awarded, but all ATP applications that aren't awarded automatically go to SCAG. And so SCAG will consider the applications in February of this year, so next month. And we actually applied for two applications. Our second application was the Gage Canal Multi-Use Trail and that was an almost $3 million project and so this would have included a decomposed granite trail, some landscape planners, some wayfinding signs, pedestrian crossings and the option for some exercise and play equipment. We were coordinating with the City of Riverside who was very much open to an agreement with the city to allow us to do these improvements in the right of way. Again, we did not get this awarded, but it will be going to SCAG next month.
So Mayor and Council, I would certainly like to work with our SCAG representative so we can do a little visit to the SCAG Executive Director to have a conversation about the importance of this in terms of the overall goal of SCAG in terms of safe transportation and walkability of communities. So we certainly think that working with your representative and I going to SCAG or having a telephone conversation would be quite helpful.
So that's the last program to present. Are there any questions for me on these particular programs?
Any questions for Director Molina? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Duffy?
I don't have anything further.
This item is a receive and file, Mayor, and so that would just be our recommendation.
Okay, so do we have requests to speak on this item? Jeffrey McConnell?
Thank you. Jeffrey McConnell, Walnut Avenue. I didn't catch it, was the bike trail to the Santa Ana River Trail involved in the SB One or is that something different?
Mr. Duffy?
That was something different.
Okay.
Oh, is that going to be addressed or is that just still out for bid or grant? I mean, still being applied as a grant or has that been awarded already?
So we applied for an urban greening grant twice for the bike trail to the Santa Ana River and we did not receive that. So one of the, in our overall goals for legislative priorities was to try to get some designation for our community because we're taking a rail and turning it into a trail, so that's our goal for the future.
Okay, second item was regarding the Barton Road, the old rickety bridge there that Colton's lead agency on, I had some questions about it for the Public Works Director. Does that remove, the proposed plan, does that remove the grade separation down to where it basically levels out Barton Road and does that include widening to eventually match what the freeway project lanes will be so that we don't have to add it to it later?
Okay. Is that your last question?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. McConnell. Are there any further questions or comments from the public on this item? Thank you. Ms. Bobby Forbes?
Thank you. I recently noticed a for sale sign on the Gage Canal. I sent Mr. Duffy a text with a picture of the sign. It says, "Loading docks, trucks, 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 trucks." That's not really the words, but loading docks means trucks. And so it is now for sale, all of that property. I'm curious as to what might be going on there when we would like to develop it, I guess, in a different way other than having loading docks. It startled me when I saw the sign, so I went and looked at it because someone called me and said, "Did you know?" I didn't know, so I wanted to go see. So drive by, check it out, check out the guy that's got it for sale. Maybe he doesn't know anything about Grand Terrace, could be. But that's kind of scary, right across the street from the school, with him having a sign up that says, "Proposed 45, 25," whatever large amount of loading docks that it is. That bothered me, so since you're talking about it, so am I. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Any further requests to speak on this item? All right, thank you. Mr. Director French, could you address the Barton Road Bridge Project a little bit?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I could address the questions. Right now, the plan is to fill over the railroad right of way, so the bridge elevation will not be the same as it is now. It would be substantially lower, but it won't be straight across. There is some rise in the profile of the alignment of the road, but it's not as much as it is now. As far as the section, the plan is only to provide two lanes of traffic just as the bridge is now and I'm pretty sure that's what the grant is, the application for the grant relayed that it's an existing two-lane road and that's what would be going back. As far as future widening, the plan at this point, although it hasn't been to the design yet, went to the design, the plan is to build one side of the street full with curb gutters, sidewalk, and then two lanes of traffic to follow that alignment and so that in the future, if it did need to be widened, we could do that on the other side. So that is planned at this point, although the design is not anywhere finalized or anything, but that's the concept at this time. Is that it? Hopefully, that's all the
Thank you, Director French. Mr. Duffy, did you want to address the Gage Canal for sale?
Actually, I'll have Ms. Molina address that.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I'll reach out to Riverside Public Utilities about that, but I can tell you that we'll look at the placement of that sign too because Riverside Public Utilities is very particular about any type of improvements in the right of way, even with us talking to them about this project and so, and they're subject to license agreements and such, so we'll look into that and I'll talk to Ms. Forbes as well.
Thank you. All right, so this is a receive and file to have a motion to do so?
Let me find it so I can read it. So it's just a motion to receive and file the
The information.
Information and progress report on grants.
Correct. So I have a motion by Councilmember Allen?
Second.
Second. Second by Councilmember Hussie, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously by Councilmember Allen. Hussie and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Item nine is a monthly financial report for October 2018. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. This staff report supports city goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. Attached for council's review is the monthly financial report for the per- for the period ending October thirty-first, 2018. So for October, uh, 2018 revenues, um, our expected was seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, although we're four months into the year, which is normally thirty-three percent, um, the bulk of our revenues we receive, um, twice a year in January and in June. So at this time, with an expected revenue receipts of seven-twenty-nine, we actually exceeded it, um, by thirty-four thousand. That's our bottom line highlighted. Two major ones is, uh, an increase in, uh, interest earnings, the use of money of property that is due to the bond proceeds that were transferred to the general fund. So it started earning interest, so we got a bump on that since it was transferred in June. And, um, the wastewater receipts, we used to receive three-hundred thousand. The agreement says that when they, when Colton raises the, um, water, um, that is charged to the Grand Terrace residents, that we should have also increased our annual lease. So I believe they increased it in 2016 or 2017, so we, uh, requested this increase, and they paid us that increase. Our expenditures, though, are more in line with, uh, the budget. So at three months, we're right at, uh, almost thirty percent, which would be right around thirty-three percent. And as you can see at the bottom line, we're just a few thousand over budget. So revenue and expense, if you look at the last column, we're actually thirty-one to the good. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Assistant City Manager Fortune? Okay, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. And this is also a receive and file, so if there's a motion to do so, I'd appreciate that.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the monthly financial report for the period ending October thirty-first, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hussie, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilmembers Allen, Hussie, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and before I start the communication, I just wanted to, uh, kind of just briefly talk about my notes that I've taken, uh, tonight, and of these items will be added to our report backlog. Uh, Councilman Allen would like the council to, uh, think about or to establish a youth commission. Uh, Councilman Hussie would like to do an evaluation of the fire department building as an asset. Uh, Councilmember, um, Robles, uh, wanted to look at an ad hoc committee in relation to the, uh, San Bernardino or the, the National Orange Show, uh, and so we'll have those items on, and the Councilman Wilson also wanted the city to, uh, consider a bigger tree for next year. All right, so my report backlog is gonna be quick, but a few items. One is it's that time of year again for the low-cost vaccination clinic, so people can bring their dogs and get rabies shots for thirteen dollars, forty dollars to microchip your dog here at City Hall on Wednesday, January sixteenth, uh, from six to seven PM. And pet licensing is also offered, uh, onsite and online. Next, uh, we are reaching out to the community to let them know that if they have a free event that is, uh, they're offering to the citizens of Grand Terrace, we'd like to have them, uh, post it on our webpage. Does your community group have an event that you would like to see appear on the city's, uh, community calendar? Please send a request to, uh, the address there, and it's also be running on cha- on Channel Three. So it's an opportunity for people to send their information forward so the community can participate. The next item is, um, what we call Stay Connected. So, um, right now, we have the multiple kiosks throughout the city, and we don't have any events going on, so this is going to be the standard, uh, poster in the kiosk. And for the first time, I believe, in a long time, we have all of our communication activities operating and ready to go. So you can get information on, uh, GT TV at Spectrum on Channel Three, and also with AT&amp;T U-verse on Channel Ninety-Nine. Um, you can also go to your computer and look on, get online, go to our brand-new webpage. It's not new anymore, but it's probably more than six months old. There's also AM sixteen forty, GT Radio is operating, and that's, that's live, and you can always get information, uh, tourism, and also on, uh, it's for, uh, for safety issues. Then you also have the ability to go to your smartphone and call in or use your smartphone to dial in. Um, then we also have a way to get in to access the WW Grand Terrace, California.gov through our Facebook page, Twitter, YouTube channel, and also with the QR code. So these will be on the, uh, kiosk throughout town, and, um, we're just hoping that we're gonna be able to provide multiple ways for the residents to stay connected. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. We have no closed session tonight, so we will adjourn. The, um, I'll remind you that we are closing this meeting in memory of Resident Bill Nessel, and we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, January twenty-second, 2019 at six PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for your communications and discussion. We are adjourned.